...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Consentiment though. There are motions to approve that consented in the vote of consent.
Move.
Please go. Motion passed. November 20, 20 monthly financial report. Okay. Good evening. So I have balances to report this month. Fund one is at six million. Fund two, two hundred and nineteen thousand. Fund three, ninety point three million. And fund four, the negative two point five million. We're tracking as expected. No concerns. This is the time of year where we'll remember that things get pretty mean. Waiting on our first round of local tax money, which usually comes in for a couple weeks in December. So anxiously awaiting that. But right now, I'm tracking as expected. And then on positive note, I do actually have two positive things to report this month. So take note. The first one, we have received to date approximately five hundred and fifty thousand in CARES money. And we are actually working on and hoping, before we leave the Thanksgiving break, to have the Flat County CARES applications submitted. So you know, not sure what that will look like, but anything we can add to it to help with the offset the expenses will be very welcome. And then second positive thing, typically this time of year, we have MSBA, Mike Cornell with MSBA come by and present us a check. Of course, with pandemic, he's not able to be here, so I get to deliver the good news. We were notified that we'll be receiving four thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents as part of our purchase and card participation program. Last year, we received about fifty-one hundred, so very comparable to where we were this time last year. Happy to answer any questions.
I got the big check from MSBA sitting on my kitchen table so that I wouldn't forget to bring it to work.
And guess what?
Guess what?
It's still on the table.
The good news is it's a water transfer. We got the money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I read pride. Special education security monitoring testing.
Is Dr. Beal coming in for that?
She is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Beal.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. You're gonna stand all the way over there. We really do like each other, I promise you. I'd like to introduce Leah Place, school psychologist. Tyson Van Dyke, school psychologist. And Sana Madlin, Mrs. Coregator. These are three members of our team in people services that work with buildings. As we problem solve student learning issues, student behavior issues, and all things related to tier two and tier three. We're here tonight, though, to recognize these three folks specifically because of a kind of big deal in our department. So as you know, in our Department of People Services, we oversee a lot of different programming pieces. Dusty provides an opportunity every three years called Tiered Monitoring. And basically, I told these folks it's kind of an autopsy of a live body. It's a deep dive into all of our compliance components. They do these for all the title programs and also special education. Four years ago, I think it was, some of us stood up here to celebrate a ninety-seven percent compliance rate with the myriad of indicators in special education. And the manual itself is about this thing. Two-sided. This year, we are celebrating a ninety-nine point oh-three percent compliance rate, and it's these folks. This is huge. This is really huge. Gives me goosebumps. I also have the pleasure of being the president of the area waste group, so local administrators with special education. And let me just tell you, little bragging moment, nobody's close to us when it comes to that. So compliance is a huge part of what we do, but student focus is really what we're about. So it's really great to have this type of feedback that shows that we're balancing those two things. So I just wanted to recognize these guys. Powerless hours. We had two other members of our team that retired. I promised Tiered Monitoring didn't force them into it, although it might have. But three still stand. And we can wait a couple more years before we have to do this again, thank goodness. But I just really want to thank you guys. We wouldn't be up and running without you, and you know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Good to see you, even from a distance. Hey, I'm here to celebrate one of our staff members in remote learning, Destiny E. Step. And Destiny is not here today because she's so awesome, and she's working with a family this evening, so she couldn't show up. But we're recognizing Destiny E. Step in remote learning for visionary leadership. And Destiny is currently teaching our STEAM elective in remote learning. So science, technology, engineering, art even, and math. And she's combined all of these to provide a unique experience for students. And so she's just been doing some really great things. In fact, and I think Dr. Gardner knows this quite well, she transformed part of her home, like many of our staff members have done, to create a learning space from which she can broadcast her lessons. And so Destiny did that, but she's not the only one. I'm sure that we have several staff members who have done similar things. So we are so proud of her. One of the things that she sent me the other day was a video of a student. They had been challenged to accomplish something that was simple by creating a Roob Goldberg machine. So if you're familiar with that, again, it's a big match of objects that worked together to accomplish a simple task. And I wish I had the video here for you tonight. But essentially, the student started at the top of their staircase in their home and created, using books and other implementation, a chain reaction that ultimately started music, Christmas music, and then went outside the house, in the front of the house, and clicked on the Christmas lights of their house. And so it's pretty neat to see that, but they were studying the math and the science behind that process with the Roob Goldberg machine. So I want to celebrate Destiny, even though she's not here. She is working with one of our pirate families, and so we are proud of her. And I think Vicky Biggs has emailed her a certificate with her pirate swag. So I'm here to celebrate Destiny E. Step.
Thank you.
You want to say that?
If we could. We've been asked to speak enough, and we're talking at this position. I guess they're hearing the speaker really well, but us, not so much. So just project as much as you can.
Fellow hearings and presentations to the board. For submission for either side on the agenda list, please direct the press for, please have the battery request for.
We have Sarah Wright will be speaking to the board. Has Sarah entered the room yet?
I don't know.
Okay. Good evening, Sarah. It's Vicky.
Hello.
And I will put up a timer and just lay it on this room, and you may begin whenever you are ready.
Okay. Okay. Hi, my name's Sarah Wright, and I'm a parent of an eighth grader and a senior here in Flat County School District. I love the Flat County schools, the quality of the teachers, and the direction of the curriculum. I never thought I'd have to be up here speaking about concerns, as my family has not had any issues in ten years. We have been a part of their school district. I am confident that the board will listen and address my concerns. My purpose of being here today is not only be a voice for the parents in the community, but to be a voice for all of our children. I do understand everyone's job is hard right now, but my focus is my children, their education, their mental health, and their future. I feel like we're failing our children in these areas for a virus with a ninety-nine percent survival rate. As of Monday, November sixteenth, per the school district website, there have been a total of sixty-nine cases since school has been back in session. This means the number of cases is a very low, one point four percent. Many households have been negatively impacted from a mental standpoint, a hundred percent. I reached out to a local doctor here in town to ask about the mental health issues she's seen, and she said it's a very conservative sixty percent of mental health impact in her clinic. We need you to be a voice with the health department, whoever else, to get past this virus and get these kids back in school full-time with normalcy to their life. The public health has been in charge of taking care of aspects of the community and their family. There is data that supports kids need to be in school. There is data showing it's not spreading at the schools. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among people ages ten to fourteen. And teenagers are at a developmental stage where it is critically important that they have regular contact with their peers and are able to develop close and ongoing relationships with adults outside of the home, such as their teachers, their coaches, or their advisors. Kids need teachers like the ill need doctors. The hybrid is not working for my family, as they get knowledge one day, then the next, it might be fifteen minutes of work. Do you really think that they're learning and absorbing the information? Virtual learners are getting in school every day, hybrid every other, but nothing consistent. And to my knowledge, there's no plans for the kids that get contact traced in quarantine. I do feel like our teachers are being overworked to accommodate everything needed from them. Most teachers are going above and beyond for our children, and they do not have to. And we do appreciate that. I attended a school board meeting before school started, and one of the board members mentioned that he didn't want this to be where kids are self-teaching themselves. I feel like that's exactly what's going on. Parents are not getting anywhere when we send emails. I understand you guys are getting a lot of emails, but we need answers as parents. Where are the numbers for the quarantine process in our school district for contact tracing, so we can see if it's working or not? Our kids actually tested positive or showing symptoms while on quarantine. Is it actually working? We don't know. I do know it's not consistent. One kid that tested positive came back four days before a kid that got contact traced due to that positive test. And that said quarantine kid missed his last games of a senior sport. How? Dead or staying. He will never get those memories back. Parents can't even get answers when asking about the quarantine, like when, where, or how. They're just told quarantine without evidence. We were told the kids would be spaced out to accommodate the six-foot, but that is not happening in some of the high school classes. The kids are wearing masks all day. They can only do so much to keep from being quarantined. They are doing their part, but yet the healthy kids are getting punished. Governor Parsons recently added guidance for our schools stating that schools with mask mandates appropriately wearing a mask can now prevent individuals from being identified as post-contact. And those individuals can continue going to school if they do not show symptoms. The governor cited low transmission seen in schools across the state with proper protocols. Why aren't we doing this? Not only have we already ripped everything from these kids, they're missing out on all things like sports, band, cheer, their last game, their last competition, because they have to quarantine due to contact tracing. And no one seems to care or have the answers. These kids have lost their dances, assemblies, sports experiences all over a virus with a survival rate of ninety-nine percent. My eighth grader will potentially lose his eighth grade year of education. He won't be ready to walk in those high school doors next year. Some kids may be excelling, but every child is different. My child, along with many other children, need to have obstruction environment to learn. We all have to deal with so much this year due to this virus. Having a senior in high school is a lot different than other grades. It's very heartbreaking knowing that they will never get this year back. I appreciate what you guys do. Thank you.
No, there are not. Thank you.
First communications. At this time, we're in communication thirty-five, order number eighty-three seven. Each of us has a telepathic, and we're people for letters. Are there any others? New business. Flat County R3 school district policy and/or procedure and documents. We are submitted for adoption. There are motions to approve or to adopt the board policy, they're being submitted. So moved. Seven. There you go. Motion passed. Regime of instruction, assessment, and instructional development process updates.
Good evening. My team's gonna be coming in, but I think I can get started here with those options. Let's see if Andy moves this up here. So this is kind of a different update than in the past, because a lot of our strategic plan that we had intended to do based on a lot of things, kind of went to the back burner, and our focus areas kind of changed. But we'd like to update you on the things that we still plan on doing, as well as the things that we're working on this year that I think are still gonna add value to what we're doing. Kind of looking at 2020, it's been rough, it's been challenging, but it's also a very good opportunity for us to get better. That's exactly what we're doing. This is our directional document and our mission, vision, values that you will see everywhere in our district and in every presentation that we do. And it's our guiding direction. This is our framework that we use for every strategic plan, including this evening. This is our team, and I know you hear me say a lot how proud I am of my team. I would say this year, I'm probably more proud of them than ever before. They have, I mean to tell you, they have done things that have just been incredible. I put their job titles up there, but those job titles are pretty much meaningless this year, because they are all doing things different than what's on that board. I have Erin and Shelley. They came into this year, they had no idea that they were gonna be principals of remote learning. And they are now the principals of the school of nine hundred children. And Erin does the secondary remote world. And Shelley, in her last year in the Flat County School District, she's gonna be leaving us unfortunately. But in her last year, she is principal of the elementary remote world. And then Alicia is our person that has been working with our in-person hybrid. So basically, what we did with our team is we, in order to help with our capacity and capability of really trying to help, I tried to remove as many things as I could from the principals' plates, so that they could focus on the in-person learners. And then we absorbed a lot of what was happening on the remote world, so that they could focus there, and then we focused there. For the most part, it was a rough start, but I think we're hitting our groove and just, again, super proud. Jen is in the next room. You'll hear her next month, but she is our executive director of people services and also very much a huge part of our team. We actually added a member of our team, Dr. Sayer, who is directing our student services. He's doing a great job this year in his first year. And then we also have Andy, our jack-of-all-trades over here. And God love Andy, man. He has, this year has tested him, and I want to tell you, I'm super proud of his patience, of his resilience. And he's just done amazing, amazing work. So again, it brings tears to my eyes to think of these guys, because they are incredible. They really are. This is our purpose as a team. We want to keep getting better at teaching and learning. That's basically why we exist. These are our supporting teams. These are the teams that we get feedback from, that we utilize in continually getting better. We have not been able to use some of these teams this year. We don't have a lot of subs. And so getting, a lot of these are generated by being able to have the time to meet with them. So we long for the days where we can get back and start doing some higher levels of collaboration with these groups. This is our central message for this year. This was not our intended central message. We had some other, we were gonna focus on math. We had some great plans for, you know, for our math professional development and those types of things. And a lot of that had to change, because, you know, we're faced with what we have. And I would say, starting with bullet number two, teaching across learning modalities has been our central message. Alicia and Shelley and Erin started that work back in August and continue to help our teachers. You know, with that, we will not be in-person learning on Monday and Tuesday. And for the first time, I think, you know, our teachers are prepared to be able to present those lessons using Google Classroom, where kids can connect and things like that. And that's a lot of the work of these guys working with our teachers. So we'll see how that goes, and we'll see how Monday and Tuesday goes, and we'll continue to get better with that. The blended learning approach is kind of our hybrid, and that's what Alicia's been working on with our teachers, helping them with that. And then something that we didn't want to lose focus on is our diversity and equity work. Dr. Patel is our champion of that. And that is something that we did not want to put on the back burner for this year, and something that we're carrying through with. And we've had some really, we even had some meetings over the summer relative to this. So these are our central messages. I end with the last one, because this last one is probably the hardest, is we've also tried to, and sometimes I feel even hypocritical saying this, because it's like you, we have all of these challenges, and we have a lot of people doing a lot of different things. But, oh, by the way, we really want you to take care of yourself, too. And sometimes it doesn't, you know, those messages don't, they just kind of like really collide. And, but we want that. We need that. We need to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves, too, and taking care of each other as we go through the challenges that we have. These are the things that our students need, whether it's pandemic or not. These are things that we've identified through our surveys and through our needs assessment. These are the things that our stakeholders need and ask of us. These are, this is our, this is our strategic plan goals. These are right out of our comprehensive school improvement plan that you have. Let me see if it works, but I think it's working now. This is actually what our intended focus area is, we're going to be pre-pandemic, based on our SWOT analyses and based on our data. And these are things that we will get back to as soon as we can, you know, relative to curriculum instruction, student support, and assessment. Shelley has, Shelley and Alicia and Erin for that matter, it's pretty much, professional development is pretty much a team effort on our team. Shelley does a great job of coordinating it, but we all do take a portion of planning it. These are our focus areas, and these are actually things that we are still working on with our teachers as much as we can. Tech integration obviously was a focus, as well as diversity and equity, as I said before. So we've used, we've used our time before school, the two weeks prior that we've had. We have had an in-service day, and we're using those to approach those. These are the venues that we use. I highlighted the ones down below, because we have not been able to utilize those. We canceled all of our topic studies this year, which we were sad about. Topic studies has been something with our teachers that have really come with great reviews. The reason why we've had to put a hold on it is because they require subs. So it's about five, six teachers at a time, but right now, you know, I think if I requested something that was up, Dr. Gardner might do something really bad to me. You get the point. We've had to kind of change what we've done. So we put a hold on those. These are the ways that we measure our success, and these are things that we put into our results summary. Now, I'll take this time to kind of explain to you. You might say, well, why did Mike put a 2019 results summary in our packet instead of a summary from 2019-20? Well, the reason is, is because we didn't have any state assessments last year. We are unclear whether our ACT data is of any value right now, because so many ACT tests were canceled, that you'd probably really like our results, but I would feel guilty giving them to you, because our percentage of students taking the ACT is down because... because our percentage of students taking the ACT is down because so many tests were canceled. We do have some AP results that from last year that we can eventually share with you as we kind of build that results summary. We just executed some of our surveys. So, the results summary is more a review of last year. And for the newer board members, it's good information because it's information that is in there that wasn't there. You know, it gives you a good framework, if you will. These are some other things that we look at that we call formative measures. We are still using STAR reading and math even during the times that we're doing now. And even our remote learners are involved in some of these formative assessments. But these are things, the reason why they're called formative assessments is they inform our instruction. Where these are more summative assessments and they're kind of a summary of our work. And these kind of inform us now of how we can adjust on the fly, if you will. These are some other ways that we get knowledge and that we use in our plans. Okay, from here, we're going to take turns here and kind of, these are some process improvement highlights. This is what we'll highlight tonight. So, I'm going to let Shelley and Erin be proud of the work that they've done in remote learning and they're going to share that. Alicia will do the in-person learning. We do have a plan, I know the presenter tonight, the parent that spoke, asked about a quarantine instruction plan. We do have one and we're going to share that with you tonight. And so, that would be really good for you guys and our public as well to know what that is. And Alicia will do that along with our inclement weather day plan. I'm going to tell you kind of like where we are with our updates with transitioning between our different platforms. And then Erin will finish us up with a little summary of what we're doing for college and career readiness. Okay? You first, Shelly?
Yep.
Why don't we take, when we take turns, I can keep our mask on and then we'll take it off when we come over to that waiting area. I got you. There you go.
Hello, I'm Shelley Baldwin. And yes, this is my final year in the district, my 31st year, so I am retiring. I'm not just quitting, just to let you know so he wasn't thinking I'm ending up because of remote learning. I've actually enjoyed the challenge. It was one of those when Dr. Brown presented, I think I said this at the last board meeting. I mean, I was honored to take on the challenge. So, what I want to share with you are just some of the experiences we've had so far. This year has been very different than spring for parents because teachers do have like a schedule that they ask parents to follow and they send out lessons. But a lot of the lessons, I mean, if it's a younger child, a kindergartner or whatever, they need help, they can't do that on their own. So, it's a lot more parent involvement. Now, if you go up to second, third, fourth, fifth grade, they have a little more leeway to be able to understand the technology, so it's a little easier. But those lower levels, I even talked to a mom today, she goes, you know, we want to stay in remote learning, but it is just very hard because she has kindergarten. So, she has to help them a lot. So, it's a good experience if you're able to help your children. And also, if you have a higher level child, some of our children that need a little more special attention just need that extra help, it would be better. The in-person environment is just a better environment for them. And relationships in these, you think that sometimes with a teacher on the side of the screen and a child on the side of the screen, that they're not building those relationships, but they are. And they're building them with students because one of the parents told me when they came in and got a picture taken earlier in October, she's like, it was so funny, the kids have masks on. But my son knew another little boy, he knew in class and was, you know, they were talking and stuff. So, I mean, they're building those relationships. The majority of our teachers are excited about continuing on. It was a hard start, we just didn't know what was happening. And some of them were struggling, we all struggled. But now they're in a routine, they're excited about it and they want to keep going. So, I'm hoping we can keep them where they're at. And the collaboration between, because we have teachers, for example, at second grade, third grade, multiple grade levels, there's a teacher from every school building, every elementary. And so, they're collaborating across the district. Where we haven't, even though we do that in meetings, they don't really work together as closely. So, they're building those relationships and we're being able to see what's happening in-person and seagulls. They're also over here at Pathfinder and really being able to just streamline that across the district. And they're keeping on pace with the in-person learners. They're making sure they still have a connection. So, the kids are pretty much on the same target as when they come back into in-person or if they switch to remote, it's pretty much the same. So, that, I mean, that's pretty exciting because just those collaborations and those teams, they're building some teams that they're going to really miss after this year. It is hard work though, I mean, it's 24/7. Just, I mean, education's hard work anyway. But this is one of those where emails and things are done at night or making a video or whatever. So, it has been hard work for them, but I think the majority of them would say it's worth it. So, but that's just kind of elementary in my experience so far. It's going very well.
And so, for secondary, of course, secondary is comprised of sixth grade through 12th grade. And we're supporting NCC as we can as well as INCAP. So, it's a broad span. And as Shelley has mentioned, it's very strange to sit at a desk and look at a screen and know that there are roughly 900 students a part of this, not to mention the dozens of teachers. And so, we are so grateful. The teachers are doing tremendous things this year, they always do. But in a special way this year, we're asking every teacher, face-to-face, asynchronous, synchronous, remote, whatever we want to call it, to do extraordinary things and they're rising to the occasion. So, if anything, I want you to hear that tonight, how amazing our teachers have been through this. Our enrollment numbers have varied throughout the semester with a commitment to ensuring that our families feel safe. And so, we have made some adjustments in terms of enrollment. We've also made those adjustments as it relates to special education and other needs for students who might need additional assistance by moving them back perhaps to face-to-face instruction or supporting them in a different way in a remote setting. You have probably heard, if you've not, we have gained some additional help with our middle school remote sections by utilizing the extraordinary staff that will also be teaching face-to-face. They will be taking on some remote classes within their day. They would not be meshing necessarily students, but it would be a day where they would log on to their computer, teach from their classroom and their students would be at home. And so, that's another way that we are accommodating both some teachers, students, families, the whole community as I see it, to get more attention for those students and some more assistance for those teachers. In that effort and to that end, we have been able to reduce the number of preps for middle school remote teachers from three preps, meaning what we had been asking, to date, we've been asking for middle school teachers, for example, to teach sixth grade math, seventh grade math, eighth grade math, which is a bit overwhelming, math specifically, to teach in a remote setting. And so, by the addition of these additional staff, we've been able to reduce that. And most of our staff members in remote learning will have sixth and seventh grades, which will make their lives a little less hectic. And I can't express to you the teacher-student relationships and the importance of those in a remote setting. We can no longer really see a child walk through the door and see their disposition or if they're having a difficult day. And so, we're still trying to do that through a screen. And for some, it's working and for others, it's more challenging. But I will tell you that, as Shelley mentioned, the emails and the calls fly 24/7 and we're happy to do that to establish those relationships. I would say probably more than ever before, we're able to connect with families via phone calls, emails at all times, connecting, hearing their story about what they're experiencing. And Shelley can attest to this, I mean, we get calls every day from families who are just distraught and others who are thanking us for being able to provide this opportunity. And so, secondary remote has not been free of hurdles or hiccups, but the teachers have made this a great success. The students have made this a great success and the families that have surrounded us and been so thankful for this opportunity have helped make it a great success. And so, have these folks here supporting the teachers and listening to their concerns. So, I want to thank you for supporting those opportunities we're going forward.
Good evening, everyone. I got to trip on my heels here on all these cords. It's nice to be with you tonight. And I just want to reiterate some of the language that my colleagues used tonight, resilience. Our staff has always been resilient in the things that we ask them to navigate in our educational field. And more than ever this year, we have had to be vulnerable in the fact that we are leading and navigating something that we've never done before in education. We've done virtual learning before, but never in a pandemic and never because we've had to or because of certain circumstances that just make things a little bit different than what the original virtual learning experience looked like for students. So, Shelley and Erin, you guys are amazing. These two field phone calls every day. We share a space, but they are so busy that I'm just kind of like, oh, I'll just find someplace else to work so they can do what they need to do in helping our families who are full remote. The other thing I want to be grateful for is the fact that we have two modalities in which our families can choose what's best for them in educating their child. And sometimes it's kind of learning, what's good for my kid, what's not good for my kid, what's great for my family. And so, as an educator and as a parent, I'm grateful that we have a full remote option where our staff and families can focus on that full remote learning. And then we have an in-person option where our in-person staff assumes, while I know we're on a hybrid schedule, which is a little challenging as well, that we have those options in Platte County. Some of our neighboring school districts are asking their folks to roll both modalities at the same time and can present multiple challenges. So, I appreciate your support and guidance as we make some of those challenging decisions as educators. This blended learning approach that we have been talking about, we learned a lot from our experience last spring. We were kind of thrown into a setting which honestly, we were not prepared for. We did the best that we could and we've learned a lot from your feedback, from the feedback of our families, our students, and our staff. As we prepared for this year, we are also grateful for the extended time and preparation you all were able to approve for us so that we can allow more time planning and collaboration for our staff to ultimately prepare for a blended learning model. What blended learning means for Platte County is a face-to-face interaction and sometimes screen-to-screen. So, at the elementary level, it looks like teachers doing a mini lesson with a group of students while maintaining socially distanced requirements and other mitigation strategies. But then having students engage in an electronic device where they're accessing material, maybe through Envision's math resource. And then at the secondary level, it does look more like the hybrid schedule. I had the opportunity to spend a week as a seventh grade math, science student and a full day as a high school hybrid student to really see what that experience looked and felt like for our learners. And I was so impressed with what our teachers were having students do and the resiliency of our students. Let's be honest, you have, most of you have children at home, right? They're better versed on technology than we are as adults. So, our students are navigating this very well, probably better than we are. So, blended learning is really important. We used our time in August to prepare teachers. As an academic services team, we pushed out modules, support, and allowed teachers to work at their own pace with our guidance, the guidance of their administrators, and the collaboration with their colleagues. Some people were at different places in their learning and so that was important. As we continue to work throughout the school year, we're using improvement team time weekly, PLC, early release time, and our district in-service days to continue to support collaboration as we continue to learn what this blended learning approach looks like for us. These are some pictures I took that I've been around. Laura's training you all, I think. I don't have a clicker. That was, go back, let me see. So, like, this is so cool, you guys, sorry. Angie said I wasn't supposed to be two hours, but here I am getting excited about our work. So, what's happening here, tell me your daughter's name.
Alexa.
Okay, what Alexa is actually doing is she's reading a book, it's recording her reading. And then the teacher can watch and listen to how Alexa's reading. And this is a great way, normally we sit side by side with the student. And as we're trying to maintain six feet, this technology is allowing us to do what we've always done in best practice, but in a different form. So, it's really cool to watch them do it and then they can listen to themselves and all that kind of little stuff. So, that's so fun. Okay, here I am. Okay. We do have a plan for students who are quarantined. Students who are quarantined are missing out on academic and social experiences, not to their own fault, right? A lot of times they're quarantined because they were doing what their teacher asked them to do, engaging in learning, and just by happenstance. And so, our purpose for our process for quarantine is to provide an opportunity for students to engage in instruction, to avoid those learning gaps. In addition, we want to maintain that social connected feeling that a lot of times we're getting feedback that students are missing when they're quarantined. I've had two, both of my stepkids have been quarantined this year. They go to, attend a different school district. But that isolation feeling sometimes occurs when you are home and missing out on that social interaction. So, we worked with Jen McClure, Robert Mueller here at the middle school, and some teachers who are willing to try some different models to engage students in that academic setting. And so, we came up with a process where students will be able to remote in through Google Meet into the classroom. This is super beneficial because the student is seeing instruction live in the classroom. They can ask questions. Sometimes their friends come over and wave, hey, how are you? That social piece is really important to our mental wellbeing, emotional wellbeing. This is a win-win for us, for students, staff, and families. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from families. Teachers have noted in some reflection videos that they can tell students are asking questions specific to the lesson that they watched remotely that day, as well as when they return from their 14-day quarantine. The gap is lessened than it was originally before we really took force in aligning a consistent quarantine plan. Okay, one of our other processes is AMI, alternative methods of instruction. The state put out an opportunity for districts to apply for alternative methods of instruction. This, there's an AMI plan that's up to 36 hours. And then there's an AMIX plan that's extended. And so, we want to be consistent in our processes. I have this weird cough thing. It's the worst time to have a cough, right? I promise it's just like, okay. Two years. Okay, we are working on AMI and AMIX. This is students learning virtually from home in the event of school closure. In the event of school closure. Thanks for bearing with you, everyone. One of the things we're trying to do is be consistent for families. So, when you look up here through these two bullets, in seven days, this has changed. So, since we submitted this to you, we have done.
Yeah, so, what the AMI allows us to do is it allows us to do, AMI is going to look like basically what Monday and Tuesday are going to look like, right? And so, if there was inclement weather days, we would be able to utilize this up to 36 hours. The AMIX would be if we had a longer period shutdown. We were approved for both. We had to submit applications for both, both were approved. We actually had some plans to do AMI this semester, but we didn't feel like, it kind of had a feel like this was going to be another thing to add to our teachers' plates. And so, we didn't feel like it was, you know, we were right there where it was communicated, where we needed it to be yet. So, we were going to hold off till second semester. However, I will tell you that Monday and Tuesday are kind of a test. And if Monday and Tuesday go as well as I believe they will go, then AMI actually would be something that it would look exactly, you know, like those two days. So, all of our teachers have connectivity with their kids with, from either two platforms, Google Classroom or at the high school, it's either Google Classroom or Canvas. So, a child on Monday morning will wake up in the morning, open up their device, and they will get into Google Classroom or Canvas at the high school if such is the case. And they will be greeted by their teacher or, you know, something relative to that class. So, their schedule will be, their schedule will almost mirror exactly like it is in-person. Am I missing anything?
No, I'm recovering a little bit now. One of the things I think that's important to note is we wanted to make sure that it was a mirrored experience. That consistency in that schedule is really important for our ability to interact with students. And so, you'll see a schedule that Laura will publish on the. And so you'll see a schedule that Laura will publish on the website that does mirror. It gives teachers some prep time in the morning. Everybody's checking in at the elementary level at the beginning of every concept block. And at secondary, at the beginning of every hour. Even if it's just to say, hey, I posted a learning video for you to watch and an assignment in Google Classroom. That gives students, which were unable to do on a hybrid day when the teacher was looking at them and gathering with the students, some direction and opportunity for kids to ask questions. The thing I want to point out is we have school closure, short-term due to COVID, which is what's kind of happening on Monday, Tuesday. We have the potential of long-term closure due to COVID, similar to what we experienced in the spring. And then we have inclement weather day. Our team has really focused on a consistent schedule for staff, students, and families. So regardless of why we're out, in the instance that we go virtual, it's the same schedule every time. We felt like based on feedback from you guys, from students, that way it's not like, oh, hey, it's a snow day. What are we doing today? And now we're out for Monday, Tuesday. What are we doing today? So regardless of why we're out and how long, that schedule will be consistent as we move from in-person to remote.
I also want to be fully transparent and in full disclosure that there, there are still some issues with our technology. Not all of our technology has come in that has been purchased yet. So some of our, some of our little ones will likely all have, be able to have access to a Chromebook, but some of our little ones may not have access to the internet at home. And so we are in the process of finding out who those families are. And so Friday, something will be tucked into their backpack so they're a part of, of those Monday and Tuesday days. But it, full disclosure, it's not, right now, we don't have it so that everybody has full access at, at this time. It's a small number, but I wanted you guys to know that and I wanted to be transparent about that.
I will say it's going to be very close. When I look about lunchtime, we were okay, but I have heard we've had another round of requests come in and I haven't had a chance to balance those against current inventory.
This will be a short-term problem. Soon as they, soon as those come in and we have, then we'll, we'll be able to distribute those accordingly.
And that's another question, Andy. Do we have a timeline or are we just?
Um, we have taken some stopgap measures to address the shortcomings as far as Chromebooks. Talked to a vendor today. Expect them to be, they said next week with the holiday. I'm a little doubtful. But by the first of December, we should have enough in hand to send home with kids who need them. Uh, we also have additional hotspots coming in, about 40 more. Uh, so that will help fill that gap too. So we're basically doubling the number of hotspots we have, again, within a week, a week and a half.
And on that topic, with teachers, you know, especially when it comes when we do get to the point of becoming a weather day when they can get into the building, do we have enough to accommodate them to be able to work?
Every staff member has a Chromebook. And so we encourage them to take that home with them as we start looking at weather and sometimes could anticipate. There's the occasional surprise in the store where I often have a story, but if we can start anticipating, we can send a reminder. Make sure you're bringing your Chromebook home with you tonight. Make sure you're ready to go. Same thing with students. Secondary helps students have their device, but we encourage them to take home every day anyway. But we can start anticipating at the elementary level, the devices start rolling in. And now that we'll have this count, that will support any inclement weather days we have moving forward. We can start sending those home in advance. Even if we come back the next day, at least we are prepared or so that we would have been. So staff have a Chromebook in addition to their desk in their classroom, but they also have the hotspots.
I think if the number stays consistent from the spring of the teachers that he did internet assistance, yes. If we get an increase, maybe not. Thankfully, those are finally getting to the point where we can get them in a more timely manner. So we could address that. You know, we find out Monday and Tuesday, we've got 15 teachers that don't have internet access, whereas over the spring we had five. We'll be able to react quickly enough, I think, to address that problem.
So we'll have a college and career update and much of my work over the past couple of years has been focusing on what do students do when they leave us. And so the three words that we've really been using over the past few years is that we want to plan for a student to be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. And the or there really is changing to and. So some students may be enrolled and enlisted or enrolled and employed. And so part of our efforts with college and career readiness continue to be funneled through those three opportunities. These are just some of the highlights that we have to share with you to date. And that is that fortunately, we've been able to offer AP courses in both the remote setting and the face-to-face setting, which has benefited many of our students. And those teachers are doing tremendous work balancing both worlds. As you probably know, Northland Career Center, NCC, celebrated 40 years of extraordinary education in our community this year. And so that's something to be excited about. Brian Mohler has done a fantastic job there along with Jeff Green, the assistant director, and the wonderful staff that they have and the partnering districts that we get to serve through NCC. We will continue to offer the ASVAP for those students interested in serving in the armed courses. We've done that for the past at least five years and I'm going to continue that effort. We've, we've made our connection with the local offices that will facilitate that. This year, because it's unique, we are going to offer it in a different way and in a different location. So Brian Mohler has joined and partnered with us to, to work through that. Dr. Jones at the high school has now taken that lead. Typically, that would be mine, but he has been so gracious to step up to do that. And so we are connecting to students who are interested in serving in that way. Uh, we have continued our ACT prep courses, our ACT boot camps, and we have continued as a district to provide for students the ACT voucher to take the ACT at a time that's most appropriate for them. For those of you who have been with us for a handful of years, you know that we used to have an ACT day. And what we've determined is that it's probably better to spend the same money in a different way and allow a student to test when it is most appropriate for them. And so we provide the voucher through the counseling department at Platte County High School for a child to take an exam, an ACT exam on a national testing day that's most appropriate for them. This year, we have had a few requests for the SAT, primarily for students that are aiming to get into an Ivy League school. I don't know anything about that, but they are making an effort. I had a phone call the other day with a student and a family. A student is aiming for MIT and has declined the potential opportunity at Harvard because it was too easy to get in. So we've got some high performers out there and we are trying to accommodate them as well. Again, I don't know what that's like, so. Uh, we have also in the time of COVID, partnered with Northland Career Center in their efforts with NIBA, which is the Northland Education Business Alliance, to participate in the Virtual Career Expo. A year or so ago, maybe, maybe some of you attended. It was quite a big event. Thousands, I think, participated and it switched to an online opportunity. Two of our employees or colleagues had the opportunity to present in that forum as well. Ms. Callie Young from Seagres, the assistant principal there, shared what it's like to work in the elementary world. And Dr. Keith Jones from Platte County High School shared in that forum what it's like to work in the secondary world. And so these are some of our college and career updates. Um, I just wanted to give that a minor update there. Typically, we'd have a little more data, but we obviously don't have that from this past spring.
All right, lastly, just want to update you guys on our, on our plans. You know, basically, my rule on the team along with Rob is we, Rob and I this year are just problem solvers. We, we, whatever these guys need, we try to get it for them. And that's, that's what we have been doing. So these are just some things that, that we've been working on as, as, as we've, as, as we go forward. We did have a declaration for November 30th that where there were families from the middle school that wanted to go to remote and from remote to in-person, we're still honoring those requests. So there are families that changed their mind. So when we, when we made the announcement that we're staying hybrid, there were some that, that were going to remote on that declaration and now say, I, you know, I would like to stay in, in, in person. So we are honoring those requests. It's not a high number, but it's something that, that we're doing. We did, and this is on me, I, I, we, we understaffed that middle school remote. Erin was gracious. That was, that was on me. And, and so what we're doing now is, is rectifying that. And I just thank those teachers. A few of them presented at the last board meeting about, about, you know, some of the things that, you know, they were going through. And it was real. And it's something that we're fixing. And starting on November 30th, we're getting them some help. And, and just want to give kudos to Dr. Adams and Dr. Hanniger at Berry who worked with Erin and Rob and I to come up with a plan to help us staff that better. And so there, the, we did have to move kids. So all of the eighth grade remote children will have new teachers for, um, um, beginning November 30th. And, and those, those teachers have already contacted the kids. We've already started that transition that, you know, that, you know, orientation type process. And, and so that, that is happening. We started to work on, so if you recall, if you go from hybrid to in-person, some of those AB schedules were really high, right? So like, even though it was on an A day, you might have 18 kids, and on a B day, you have 18 kids. That would mean if you bring that class together under that one teacher, you'd have 36 kids and that's too much. So Rob and I were able to, um, to rectify that if the need be. Obviously, we are not going to do that now, but we know where we need to do it when the time comes. So because of, because of that work that Dr. Gardner has done, it will make it easier for us when the time comes. So we can pivot faster than we, than we would if we wouldn't have done anything. So it wasn't all for naught. We have, we know what we need to do. We've done the same thing with the high school as well. So we know where those holes are and, and we can, we can fix those. Um, I'm not sure we're going to until the time comes, but we, we know where those are and we know how, how we can do that. We're working on the student, student transitions. We will have, we'll have some sixth graders that have been remote that have never seen their school before. And so we have to orient, orient those kids, right, to the school. So a lot of those transition. And Dr. Harris has been awesome in, in helping our building administrators with safety and, and operations as far as making sure that we're ready for whatever numbers come our way. Um, so at the high school, we did have a declaration that ended 13th. We, 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 we will obviously honor any requests based on the new information that, that they do. So asynchronous, let's talk about that word. It's a word I've never used in my life until this year. And, and I'm, I'm getting used to knowing how to spell it now. But, but asynchronous was our approach to honoring a child's elective choice. But here, here, here's what happens. They take the class from one of our teachers, but it's not during the school day because that teacher who's teaching that course already has a full load throughout the day. So what this allows us to do is a child still gets that elective class, but it doesn't totally kill our master's schedule by pulling teachers out of the master's schedule for all of these electives. And there's a lot of them. There's a lot of electives. Um, in fact, I, I want to say we were probably at 95%. Like we, we, if, if a child signed up for a course, about 95% of the time, they, they, they were able to get that course. So anyway, we'll, we'll continue that next semester. I will start walking the high school hallways and seeing which teachers will be interested in, in, in teaching those courses for, for those kids that, that have those. We are working on a staff addition for the high school in math. Those are where our high class sizes are because we took two math teachers out of this school to do remote because of unusual math requests, our math courses. So because of that, we know we need to get the high school some math help. And time for teachers was if we needed that transition, we will need that, that later, as it seems. Elementary, finish up with that. Last, last update. So elementary has some children that are going from remote to in-person as of last week, right? Times are changing. You gotta, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of different things. So as some children go from remote to in-person, then there may be some staff changes where we'll take some remote teachers and put them back into in-person. I want you to know that in case you start hearing things about, you know, where kids at, at the elementary level in January may have a different teacher. And the reason for that is we'll be bringing teachers possibly back on, on, back into the in-person and then we, we will have to disperse some kids a bit. And we'll be delicate with that. I understand especially an elementary kiddo, how, how much they love their teacher. Um, so we'll be respectful of that, but I wanted you guys to know that that's a possibility as, as, as we start to, as we start to look at that elementary transition. All right, I know that's a lot of information. What, what questions might you have? Any questions for us?
Will we know the results for Monday and Tuesday? How everything goes?
You, you, I'm, I'm sure you will. Yes, in multiple ways.
I hope it's very positive. I just want you to know you guys are on alert now because if it works well, you just made snow days off sleep. So you gotta deal with them, kids.
Well, I, I'm, Bobby, I'm sure it'll, I'm sure it'll go well. I, I, I mean, I, I'm telling you, between these leaders and our teachers, guys, our teachers have been amazing. I mean, just absolutely amazing. Um, some of the stories that I hear from our teaching staff on what they're doing with kids, it, it's just, it's just.
I got a good story from Seagres where my daughter was quarantined in a, Mrs. Skid, who was the teacher, and Dr. McClure and those guys got together and they, you know, they rectified it. Even today, Mrs. Skid didn't think she was doing well, you know, she works her heart on her sleeve. But now that she's back in full time, I think, I think the process went really well. And I was fortunate enough that my daughter, you know, her for that remote learning, they learned. So you guys are, are doing a good job.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that.
When it comes to the inclement weather days, what is a student that doesn't participate?
Yeah. Sure. No, I think that's a, that's a good question. Um, so we need to make sure that we're monitoring who is participating because, you know, technically, you know, it's like, taking attendance obviously is a little different, right? Um, but you want to make sure that that child's okay. So I would say, you know, as we, as we see who's attending, as we see who's participating, if somebody's not there and then not, again, not there, then I would say it's the same as in-person. We need to check out, you know, to make sure that that child is safe, okay, you know, those, those types of things. So I think those are processes that will have to work out because obviously it's not as easy as when we're in the building. But nonetheless, you know, it'll, it'll be important for us to, you know, make sure that everything's okay, you know, with, with those children that aren't. Um, and then obviously you have some that aren't participating because, you know, they're, they're, they're not. We need to handle, handle that as well.
I know that it's still in process, but do you have any ideas yet about the movement from remote to, from remote to in-person at the different levels? Any numbers?
The numbers, yes. Um, so Andy, just talk to me, Dave, we have over 100 that will go back for elementary from remote to in, in person. That's as it is today. These numbers like change all the time. The, ironically, when we did the middle school and the high school, it was pretty much a wash. It wasn't, but the, the net for elementary was definitely more for in-person than it was for remote. For middle and high school, it was more. For middle and high school, it was more of a wash when you say.
Yeah, period of stuff.
Yeah. Which is actually better for staffing. But, uh, you know, elementary will be a little tricky for us, but we'll figure it out. Any other questions? I submitted for you guys, uh, last year's results. So you can, you can, uh, some of you are familiar with those and, and some of you not. So, um, that's, that's good information. Um, also, we submitted, um, our curriculum links for you. Um, you have the result summary, which I just showed you. You have, um, our, our plan. You have the instructional frameworks that we use. Um, you have Shelley's, uh, professional development, which is actually an action item, um, for a professional development plan. So we can do that after we're done. And then Aaron, who oversees our media center, um, also provided you a program evaluation for that. And then next one, um, you will have Dr. Butel, um, on tiered support, um, services. And so that's what will be next. You're very welcome. Thank you. And thank, thank you guys.
Is there a motion to approve the 2020 and 2021 version of the document? And is there any additional professional development program evaluation in place?
Okay.
Sorry.
Can you stop? What were you opening plans today?
I just have a couple of things I'll share, and I'll open up any questions that you may have. But, uh, you know, obviously I'm very sensitive to, uh, the sentiments of people like our, our speaker this evening. Uh, I hear from those people. I know you do as well. Uh, we also hear from people who believe the hybrid is working for them and are supportive of the hybrid. And obviously we've had some people who like the virtual, uh, virtual option as well. So this is a time when something different is working for different people. And, uh, so what we are left with is to make a decision. And we know a certain percentage of our population will not, uh, will not be well received for them because of the virtual situation. We have to make a decision for the entire district. And so what I've, what I've done, uh, first of all, I think we, we all share this feeling. We want our kids to be back in-person. But we want to be able to do that with the support of our local health officials. And we also need to have a viable workforce to do that. And so we, our numbers are rising. Our positive cases are rising. Our quarantines are rising. We are now, there was a time when I would have told you that, um, that kids are not being exposed in schools because of our mitigation strategies. I do think that it's still lower in our schools than the, than the, uh, the general community or out, out of the community. But we are seeing infection with both parties wearing masks, uh, when they are exposed. And it is happening in our, our communities, and those numbers are rising. We share this information with the health department. In fact, we, we go over a lot of information about the department. Um, we have a, an entire guiding document that is, uh, we call, uh, indicators for dynamic decision-making. And lots of numbers and data, but also lots of conversations, uh, you know, around what we know to be true in the mental health aspect of the pandemic. And the food instability that, that our community is experiencing in certain, certain areas. Because these are hard decisions, and they shouldn't be made just by looking at numbers. They should be looking, they should be made, weighing quantitative and qualitative factors. With all of those factors considered, uh, we agreed that with our rising numbers, this was not the time to compromise our sort of, our ability to social distance at the secondary level. It was a very hard decision and not, not necessarily where I wanted to go, but, uh, the health community, while there are, uh, out, outlying voices, uh, and I can tell you, I just participated in a, a call with our chief medical officers across the metropolitan area, some of the most respected healthcare professionals in the metro and, and one of the, of the nation. And they are worried about the hospital situation. And they are actively asking us as school districts to, to maintain to the best of our ability to be lower than the technical control. And that is, uh, sanitize, uh, sanitizing, social distancing, and masking. And so with all of those factors, it seemed appropriate to hit pause. Uh, obviously next Monday and Tuesday, we're dealing with the workforce issues. Uh, we also believe that our substitute teachers will be, uh, at a minimum the two days before a holiday. So, um, you know, as a silver lining, but not part of the decision. It doesn't give us the ability to, uh, to practice that modality of learning so that we can be better when we have snow day or if we are needing to do that, uh, because of our, our workforce numbers. And it would be our intent to move forward after Thanksgiving and try to isolate the, the individual buildings rather than do, do district virtual. Uh, but we're going to do whatever we feel we need to in collaboration with the Black County Health Department uh, and with input from our, our regional healthcare professionals. So that's, that's kind of what went into the decision-making. I know I've talked to several of you individually, and, uh, you know, I, I, once again, I want to, I want to reiterate. I deeply, I mean, deeply care, I, I deeply care for our kids, our staff, and our entire community and how our decisions affect all of them. These are weighty decisions, some of the most difficult decisions I've made in my career. And, and they're not taken lightly. So, uh, again, we will continue to work to be ready to come back for a person. Dr. Brown and his team, thank you. You guys have done, uh, tireless work, long hours, resolving very difficult logistical conflicts, not only to find out that we're hitting pause on our return. But we're ready, right? And now we work on our plan to bring high school students back. So that when we are able to do this, when we have the support of the health department, and when we have, when we're sure we have a viable workforce, we're ready. And so we will work to that end. We want our kids back. We miss them. We want to see them every day. In, in the meantime, we'll, you know, work this hybrid model at the secondary level uh, and, and continue to collaborate with the health department. And when the time is right, we will bring more kids back. So without, well, is there any questions you think, Alan?
I'm just really glad to see the plan in place while Monday and Tuesday to have the, the virtual stuff going because, you know, that'll be, keep the routine, keep the routine going as kids learn and have the kids get the opportunity to get up, go to school, and still learn. And we think this could have been like as a day just to take off about the beginning of the day. And I'm glad that we're pushing the teachers, I'm glad the teachers are going to be good on our stuff.
I actually, uh, couldn't even mention that because, uh, Dr. Brown invited me to a session where they were going over the structure of these days. Uh, and in part, uh, Dr. Brown wanted to make sure that I, I felt comfortable with what was going on and a very practical level of structure that was in place and written relatively short on time. And so I think our approach will be, it's not going to be perfect.
Yeah.
We know that. We do, we do learn, but, uh, we do have a good structured approach to this, uh, to these.
These good teachers will be there to have more help for, helping the students, like, help the teachers. Well, they've been through a lot. We've all been through a lot. And it's been a great job by you guys, the teachers, or, you know, we did a good district. We did a close job. And I'm, the right decision, like you said, we all want to get back to school. The decision I think that they took the right.
Well, I heard that, uh, schedules, um, my children. I was very impressed with them, also working parent, yes. My work schedule all around it, but it was much more shorter than I, than I did. And make that move here. So that brings up another point here that I think has been lost in some of the moments in the month I had with a chief medical officer. I have the ability to do that in here, and we start in my day and figure it out. Not everybody has that, luckily. And, um, in particular, when I've been on my staff, we can, uh, constantly do the same thing. So when we have children at home, that's a burden elsewhere. So I think we do need to be mindful of that. You know, should this become extended, hopefully not, but, like, we don't just hurt our staff, our children, we have to be mindful of the whole way. Come on, there's a nurse, uh, you know, parent, the doctor. That's how big these are. You know, without children in schools, I'm going to have to teach them. Obviously, that's a big part. If somebody goes to supervise, yeah. That is a concern, hospital, the diet.
I will mention, uh, you and I talked about this, uh, at some point in the week, long week. Uh, we all, we will have what I call a little bit of a pathfinder, and we will be prioritizing our healthcare first responder, or frontline workers uh, who are back at the healthcare, uh, that's provided. So we did this this summer also, if you remember. Uh, so we are trying to, to, uh, to help that situation. Uh, but yeah, when we go to full, you know, I heard the same from, from, uh, from the chief medical officers. Um, you know, some of the districts that are going completely virtual, not only is that a burden for the families, but the, the healthcare system is feeling that's a burden as well. So, you know, we're trying to maintain as much in-person as we can. And so, um, we're at the hybrid. Hopefully we can get back, uh, very soon to get back here soon. We, we need to see better numbers, and this is probably a good time. I'm not one to go preaching to our community about what they should and should not do. Uh, but we need, we need our, we need their help. We need the community's help. Most of this spread of infection is happening outside of our schools. Um, and, and, you know, we, we need the, the help for our community. And I just urge our community to maintain social distance. Wear the face coverings and sanitize. Uh, and I, I, you know, I just hope everybody is as safe as they possibly can be with the holidays. Because if, if not, we will feel the repercussions here.
I also have a question, and I'm not sure that I can clear it myself, but the track numbers of physical health, what are we seeing in numbers of mental health?
You know, we don't have, here, we don't have, and that's part of the problem with trying to discern exactly what the impact is. We don't have hard black and white numbers. We do have data from Tri-County. Uh, their numbers are up in terms of, uh, uh, referrals, in terms of, uh, reports of suicide, uh, suicide aviation. I, I understand, I, I don't quote me on a percentage, but the hot, the suicide hotline numbers from state and area are up. We also know that, uh, child abuse numbers are down, uh, which means that people are, we, we know abuse still is, is happening, but it is not being seen as readily because kids aren't as schooled, in school as much as they, uh, you know, they were pre-pandemic, uh, where we have mandated reporters that are, that are taking care of, uh, and to make sure that we're adequate for our kids. Uh, so that's part of our consideration. And, you know, I think there's, there's a balanced approach that has to be, uh, understood with regard to our consideration of what Lord modality we should be in. Uh, it's not just about the COVID numbers. There are other, other factors, and they all, they all weigh very heavily on, on our, on the, on these decision-makers on purpose. You know, again, I, I know you know this, but these are not decisions that we would take lightly. We know that they, uh, the magnitude of our decision were very, very sensitive.
Yeah, that's why I heard from, I mean, medical professionals, but I was supposed to, I just think school reports, you know, that we don't have as long as, say, um, infection mitigation protocols, we met. Um, but also I've had a pretty low percentage of patients that I had for the past two days. A lot of family that was really struggling, like, and then helped us back. There were body concerns out there, of the long-term impact of that. But can I know that, um, you're going back after these days?
Yes. Yep. We will return, uh, after Thanksgiving. K5, full in-person virtual option, and 612, hybrid virtual option. So basically, I'm going to turn around without any of that.
You said that middle school will all get back after their students?
No, middle school will remain in the hybrid after Thanksgiving. So we're pausing the, the return of the full, the full return.
And then basing that on what the health department is hoping?
We're, we're basing that on a myriad of, uh, uh, dynamic decision-making indicators. So positivity, um, the quarantine numbers, the availability of a viable workforce, um.
I'm not taking away from that.
The ability to social, to retain ability, uh, to social visits, um. Our student attendance, our student attendance has probably been going down steadily. Uh, this stuff is not at a alarming level, but it has been going down.
Are you thinking of parents who are holding their kids back out to virtual?
No, we're, uh, kids are, that's going to virtual mode. They're, they're still in attendance.
Okay. So my question is, I see the numbers. The number is just 1869, almost 5,004 in the school district, the staff and the students and stuff. So my concern is, is, you know, the interaction and the member welding, you know, students that are, you know, that are struggling to learn. So why can't we, I mean, somewhere along the line, I mean, the numbers says it all to me. And when I see what's going on in the rest of the world, and I know the numbers are going up within the, but in the metro, but we're, we're away from the metro. We're north of it. And we, I would like for an opportunity to get these kids back to school. We have a plan in place in case something happens. But as of right now, I mean, the positive cases and people that are actually seriously being ill, we just don't see the, I mean, I think we should just move forward and getting kids back to school. Let's just try it, and make aid to kids and the parents who want to go to school.
Without people that you spoke of this, you don't have that much longer. That's no longer, that's no longer an option, though, to help the parents.
Right. I mean, these decisions aren't made just from the school administrator perspective. We're, we're listening to our, our community health professionals. Um, not, not only the local health department, but also the, the chief medical officers in the region. So, um, I see the numbers, the percentages that, you know, that this is covered extensively in the media in terms of, uh, the numbers and the, and the percentages. But really want to come down to it, I'm going to talk to the people who are charged with keeping our community safe from a public health perspective. I'm going to listen to the epidemiologists and their concerns, and I'm going to listen to the CMOs. Because I, I'm not an expert in public health. That, you know, I don't think, aside from, uh, maybe having a medical background, uh, I, I don't think many of us would call ourselves experts in, in public health. Uh, so we got to rely on those experts. And, and, you know, right now, with the numbers rising, and the numbers in Flat County are just as alarming and concerning as the numbers in Kansas City, uh, it is here. Perhaps there's some zip codes in our, in our district that are better than others, but our numbers here are significant, and they have been rising for, steadily for, uh, three, four, three or four weeks now. And, and actually, when we came to the board in October with the recommendation to return, the numbers were high because we were looking, about that time, we were running right at about a 12% positivity rate. And again, with, with some concerns about the, the data in the, in Flat County, the entire metropolitan data, uh, many of the health departments are, are, are more confident they have a robust testing protocol. Um, and so at that time, we were seeing static numbers right around that 12% figure and right around it. Since then, we have seen numbers go up into the 23, uh, to, to 30% positivity rate. And they've gone steadily up since then, and that's, that is the case here in Flat County. Well, so, you know, there was a time where I, I think we could say that, that we were doing better in Flat County, uh, in terms of our numbers, but that time's fact, uh, we, we are now in, in, uh, the same sit- situation. We are now in the same situation in the entire region.
My health department, if we do change how we do the quarantine, does that way interfere with the whole?
Yes. Regardless of our ability to operate is how it is our quarantines. And so right now, I can call, talk to them, the same rate of one hundred and sixty students and staff that are quarantined. A significant number of staff members that are quarantined. And yes, the matter by which we are doing contact tracing is letting itself to higher quarantine numbers. Than if we were to do what the governor and the DHSS suggested. The problem is that we are working with our local health department. And our local health department, really since the beginning of time, has been aligned to the CDC's control. They have been, pre-pandemic, the CDC was the, you know, the overarching entity that led itself to local health decisions. And so they are sticking with the CDC guidelines and not aligning themselves to the governor and the DHSS. So because of that, and that's not our decision, that's the decision of the health department and their board trustees, they are sticking with CDC guidelines, which requires us to continue to contact trace regardless of a face covering. So that's certainly part of it. And I'll tell you, I participated on a, on the board of trustees meeting on Tuesday night. And I shared our perspective. I was honest in letting them know that operationally, if they were to adopt the governor's suggestion and then of the DHSS, it would provide us with some relief in terms of our quarantine numbers. But I also let them know that I am not a public health expert, and I don't know what the implications of that is precisely, and what we rely on that for. So, you know, I told them what our situation was and how we are operationally challenged. And then I acknowledged that they are, the health department, the entity, that makes decisions. We thought things like quarantine procedures, yeah. And so I defer to them, and they have decided that they're sticking with the CDC guidelines. And I'll be honest, full disclosure, ironically, I have advocated for change in our quarantine process. I would, I have advocated for some leniency. But I'm sitting here, now I'm starting to see positive faces from close contact, where both parties are wearing masks. So we're living a science experiment. And what I am advocating for one day, you know, may or may not be grounded in science. And we're learning the science as we go in some respects. So I would love to have the leniency, but at the same time, I don't know what the cost of that leniency might be. So I have to defer to the public health officials.
I think I have another question about you. How do we know where the positive cases truly originated from? It's part of the problem, but also, do we have any numbers to what, what affectance that quarantine?
How many of the positive?
Yeah, and positive. I know a lot of parents are asking this, well, give us a question.
I'll tell you what, I can share with you what I know. But we don't feel like these numbers are reliable. Because we only know what is reported to us. And there's a, I think a reasonable assumption is that there are some positive cases that are not reported after they develop, because they're being quarantined.
Oh, I'm sure if they're quarantined.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's families that think, I don't need to tell the school district, I already quarantined.
We're too sure that they will, if the left is ever saying, well, my kid was quarantined, now they've got this COVID. So now that's the number, like, in the school district. But how many people have been quarantined, came to us and said, hey, my kid got the COVID?
So I don't have the depth data for the entire year, but I can tell you what it's been for the last few weeks. Two weeks ago, we had three out of, three out of a hundred and fifty quarantines. The week following, we had five out of a hundred, hundred, almost two hundred quarantines. And I don't have final numbers for the most recent week. So a relatively low level percentage-wise, but we don't know, we only know what families are reporting to us, what's their quarantine. So we haven't felt like such reliable data to share with the community. Sharing them with the community now, but I'm also giving the caveat that we have no idea how many of these cases are positive. But we only know that they take the initiative to share that with us.
And what's in it to be tested once you're quarantined? And you're going to live out, you're going to be behind the times, you have died, that's why you're quarantined. So if in our experience, while we were in quarantine, we didn't go crazy, we didn't have symptoms either. But we didn't go to get tested just to know, because it didn't matter, we were there two weeks anyway. I don't, I think the numbers are going to be low, but the.
That's true. And then also, if you are, if you do not display symptoms in your quarantine, that doesn't necessarily mean you didn't have COVID. Because we have, especially in youth, we have so many asymptomatic carriers. And those people, even though they are not displaying symptoms, are still contagious. So there's, again, this is, I'm getting into, and I have, not like now, but through my career, I've become an expert on a lot of things. If I didn't, I never think that I wanted to be an expert at, or needed to be an expert at. But I'm learning this as I go. But I'm really relying on the people whose job it is to watch for, you know, the safety of being in our public health.
So as pointed at, anyone that's still not going back, I really encourage that this is just a pod, and that's still our goal. And I appreciate, you know, the willingness to decide. It's not what's best for you or your kid, or the teacher, it's what's best for everyone. The letters we get, by and large, are concerned about, you know, the letter writer. And I give that, I have a concern too about what's best for my kids. But you have to look beyond that to do what's best for all of us. So as disappointed as I am that we're not going to meet after, or whatever it was, this autumn semester, in person, full person, in high school, middle school, I completely understand, and I support it, as disappointed as I am. And most encouraged, but that's where we're at now. If we go that way, we can do it in short order.
Couldn't have said it better. And, you know, speaking from a parent, this guy who has one hybrid and one full face-to-face at elementary, I would like nothing more than to give them both back full face-to-face. I feel like that's best, if we can do it safely. And so, you know, yeah, I don't make the decisions based on how this affects individual families, including my own. I've got to make a decision based on the entire district. And that's not easy to do. And I would say it's my job, but these decisions have been tougher than any I made, like I said earlier, in my time. But we will continue to be ready. And when that time is right, and we have the support of the health department, and we have a viable workforce, we're going to move in that direction.
I would just say, one of the things that, if, we have to be careful from the standpoint, like, if our numbers go way to the other side of remote, that makes us less ready. Because then you have to pull more staff members out of the master schedule to support the remote. So I think what you guys are doing now, just kind of being, you know, cautious and not making the numbers go drastically either way, because right now, we're looking at a loss. That is, that's a good place to be able to do what you're saying, Gary, pivot in a timely manner. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
You have to be, adjust their quarantine, you have to be, would that be very helpful? So have minimal quarantine, that's possible.
I mean, honestly, you advocating at this point, from what I'm seeing, would need to be at the CDC level. I mean, you're in healthcare, right? CDC, we've used the CDC's guidance, you know, before the pandemic, it never clicked on that. That, you know, that, but here we are. And this puts us at a terrible position, guys, you know, as decision makers for a school district, as board members. When you have health departments saying different things, it puts us in a terrible position. And lo and behold, here we are, the CDC was saying one thing, our state's saying another, and our health departments interpreting it however they deem appropriate. I will say, the metropolitan area, in terms of our health departments, are pretty consistent that they are sticking with CDC. If you go out into smaller communities, I think you'll see more health departments aligning themselves with the DHSS. Obviously, social distancing is easier to accomplish in some of those areas. And so maybe they don't, their health departments don't have the great concerns of our health departments. You know, they've used the CDC and aligned themselves with CDC for a long time. You know, I think it's problematic for them to stray away from that, like, they're doing that for so long.
And we just want to go to her within sixteen of, something like.
Six feet, fifteen minutes. And again, I mean, we are following CDC guidance, our contact tracers are training. And we're trying to take a scalpel approach as much as we possibly can. If you, you'll have to look at some other district data, you know, proportionately, I think we're being reasonable. I know some of our parents would agree with that. But I promise, if you compare our numbers proportionally, you know, we're being as reasonable as we possibly can with the guidance that we're given.
And they're too open.
It is.
I think we've also heard anecdotal stories, like, you're being personally quarantined.
If it is an action of the school district, it is fourteen days. I will say that there have been, I'm guessing that there have been students or parents making the decision to self-quarantine or to self-isolate. That is without the school district asking that of them. And to others who aren't aware of how that happened, that may look like a shorter quarantine, but that is not an action of the district, or that was not under the device of the district, or the district asking that. So, I mean, for him, my son, my oldest son, was displaying symptoms. Running nose and headache, pretty typical for young people to experience that, right? Well, I chose to keep him home for a few days, should the college system say. He wasn't quarantined, the school district didn't ask him to do that. But I was trying to be, trying to do what we've asked our parents to do, and then keep him home without feeling it. So, you know, those situations, we don't have control over. And I will say, speaker is accurate, the CDC guidance is fourteen days for a close contact, ten days for positive COVID test. And there's rationale and science behind those days, but it does seem counterintuitive. I will agree to our parents. We sometimes hear, well, shoot, I'd be better off if my kid had COVID, which is not true. You know, we don't want our kids to get sick. But in terms of the quarantine period or the time away from school, yeah, right. But that is the CDC guidance. And there is a, there is a scientific explanation for the differences that I won't even attempt to deliver here today.
My question would be, is, there's fourteen days to quarantine. You know, I don't know, not my way, but this question for me is, these vaccines, you know, they just have a positive on their major side, and they're immune to it. And they said they're going to test them, and they just got one day. And if they test negative, they're going to play something, bless our God.
No.
So how are they going to be able to give you an exception?
I think they test daily. I don't think they, they just get tested once and then they go on. I think they test daily.
But quarantine, lockdown for two weeks is like, isn't that the time that you would give the symptoms or maybe you would catch the COVID for two weeks? That would, that would, if you, that's what I do.
So you can get symptoms Monday, Thursday.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like I was saying, they were told Monday, and if they test something morning, they can send it, they put it on. But that's not my way, but I'm just saying.
Just one, that's three hours, and they're just going, every day, eight hours a day. That's just a three-hour window, they were negative before. They play three hours and they go home.
So what you're saying is, what I'm not trying to advocate, what they're doing, you know, we're, we're making the reports when we can, these sports, we're making it here.
That's the county deal. And we're doing what county does. And when I was quarantined, I was quarantined by the county, I was quarantined by the school. The same thing the school does for us, they supply the contact tracers, and the county can't do that. They don't know where to fit the order. If the school does that, they still quarantine on the school. And you don't have to pay for it.
Too far off path here.
I mean, I'll keep, my answer's simple. And what the NFL is able to do and what we're able to do is, you know, I mean, what, just, you know, in terms of stadium capacity, there's been a lot of guidelines for street sports and high school sports, with guidelines that are more restricted than what you're seeing for the NFL and professional sports. I mean, both, you know, all our professional venues have been afforded some exceptions that we have. So I'm not here to tell you whether that's right or wrong, but that's, that is, that's a fact.
Coaches are doing an excellent job in this, making sure that their athletes are ready to go and play sports. Because I don't know, I don't know if the cases where they were tested positive in some of the athletes, but they're definitely passing child lawyers, you know, in these sports, and I recommend coaches.
John Hiker, if you'd told me ten weeks ago that we were going to be, you know, getting into football playoffs and, you know, making a state championship run with volleyball and absolutely get that deep into the season up. I don't want to make light of the fact that we have had some kids quarantined and missed out on some opportunities. And that makes us very sad when we have to do that. We wish we had, we wish there was a different way or a better way. We're dealing with protocols that we don't have, you know, we have to adhere to. So that's tough. But I mean, by and large, I agree, probably across the district, we've had a successful policy that continues to be successful. And now we're looking at winter sports. Which brings on a whole new set of challenges. We do have somebody that is much more qualified to speak on some of the things I've been talking about. If you have any questions for Dr. Phil?
Yeah. All right. Any questions?
Thank you for all the support.
I do, Ricky?
Yes. All right, here we go.
Yeah, not a traditional, let's just play an update, but you've probably seen by now that Kansas City Health Department and our Flat County Health Department are calling suit, issuing new orders. We're kind of going through those orders to see what the implications are for us. The only real implication I can see right now are for winter sports. I've talked to the Flat County Health Department, but I'm also meeting with the suburban conference tomorrow to analyze how each health department across the suburban conference is interpreting these orders with regards to winter sports. So I don't really have anything to update, other than, you know, at this time, Flat County is not requiring the participants. Flat County has not acquired the participants to mask all in strenuous activity. And at this time, they are allowing us to submit a variance to, to have more than 10 spectators. I'm saying at this time and emphasizing that because there could be a change to that and there could be other health departments taking a different approach. And obviously, since we're a conference that spans multiple health department jurisdictions, it will have implications on winter competition. So I just wanna make you aware of that and be posted as, as others.
Risk ban requirement for district staff to test for vaccines or certain vaccines.
But the risk ban requirements are up to the post site. And it's really, it depends on how the post wants to account for the limitations. So some districts are doing tickets, some districts are doing passless. I think a lot of them are doing the bracelets, the easier visual, but that's with the post site.
All right. Important days. Thanksgiving break, no school, Wednesday, November 3rd, Thursday, January 1st, last day of fourth mandate, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, January 19th, 5 o'clock PM. Whatever, no school, Wednesday, December 3rd, Friday, January 1st, last day of fourth mandate, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, January 19th, 5 o'clock PM. January, we're vetting, we're developing that, we're just vetting center. On Thursday, January 21st, 6:30 PM, we can be in the closed section, I think it's around 5:30. Comments by board members and administration. First of all, I think we're all seeing how much heart everybody is putting into it, administrators, staff, teachers, students. And we appreciate it, you know, it's been a long, long haul and it's not over yet, but it doesn't help, I know it's, it's very much appreciated. I'll give the same little lecture I gave last month. I, I fully welcome input, community, civic engagement, of advocating it from the time I got on the board. But I would also encourage everyone listening, still, to be kind in those and be productive and ask questions. But also don't spread bad information. I've gotten a lot of calls with misinformation or I've heard this. Ask questions. And I know there are a lot of people in this room who would be more than happy to answer and provide accurate information. And that's the best way to help, like, as a group. Anybody else?
I think we had a lot of good discussions tonight about everything and I think about the right theory at some point. And asking for the community's help and just kind of in schools, that we can, slow, just like ID, the most hallmark of things. I mean, during that, and this is something, and that is a big part of why it's not right to them. I mean, both ways, right now, because we have, so we cannot keep that separation. And I would end up with more, and more, one of our staff, yes, we're still, so. Well, yes, I think we discussed a lot tonight, but the community, yes, over the holidays, just make smart decisions and we gather in some homes. And then that's the kind of follow-up on our, you know.
I have two things, just real quick, actually, I just have one thing. Maybe took care of the second. You've probably heard that the state is, has given school districts antigen tests, which are rapid COVID results tests. And we have obtained somewhere north of 5,000 of those tests. So right now, our plan is to use them for staff members. We are not in a position where we believe it's, we're not ready to, to test students yet. Lots of reasons for that, including, we're not sure exactly where children's birthday is on administering antigen tests to children. We are encouraged by the reliability rate, I'm very high. There's not a lot of research done on reliability rate of children yet. And so we're, we're determining whether or not, or if, we would use them to test students. But right now, our plan is, the good news I want to share with you is that we will have these tests. We're waiting on, on biohazard disposal process, approval of procedures from the health department. It will be scheduled in kind of like a walk-in situation. So staff members will have scheduled time to be tested. And it must meet specific symptomatic criteria to be tested. And the purpose is to maintain a healthy workforce. So if the staff, you know, we're asking staff members if they, if they're not feeling well, to stay home. If a staff member develops a cough, you know, a hallmark symptom of a common cold, and they want to, for the peace of mind, get a test, we can test them, get a rapid results and know that it's okay for them to be in the workforce. So that, this should help us with our, with our workforce concerns. I don't think it's gonna be, you know, a huge game changer, but it will help us get some, some staff members back in their position. So I'll keep you posted, like I said, especially if we're gonna start, you know, if we're gonna start testing students, I'll, I'll keep you posted on that, but we're just not in a position where we think that's advisable at the time. I don't think, the, the plan is, you know, soon as you shit your head, we're gonna use nursing staff.
We'll use, you're involved.
Okay, yeah, so we're using the, the nurse of the CDC to administer the test. There are very specific requirements for what our nurses can and cannot do with regard to testing students. And so that's part of our concern with, with testing students, along with the, you know, the lack of research on these tests with regard to children. But yes, we'll, we'll utilize them. That's all I have, other than, have a happy and safe, safe, socially distance, thank you.
Anyone else?
Actually, we just need to recess early session at this point. Basically, we're going back into executive session, so I have recess at 8:30 C M.
Okay, thank you.